Call to order the Township of Ocean Planning Board Regular Meeting, June 28, 2021. Amy, could you perform the roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Defilia?
Yes, here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher? Mr. Good? Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Ciano?
Could be here.
I know he's here. Okay. Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. The notice of the requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster and filed in in the Ocean, in the Office of the Township Clerk on July 27, 2020. Board policy, no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM and no new testimony will be taken after 11:00 PM. Resolution memorialization. 1803-1807 Holbrook LLC Block 33.29 Lots 2 and 3. 1803-1807 Holbrook Street, Oakhurst Minor Subdivision Approval. Can I get a motion to approve this?
This is it. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Amy?
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes. Okay. Roller Road LLC Block 12182 Lot 2, 1414 South Roller Road, Ocean. Site plan approval, bulk variance approval. Can I get a motion to approve these?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
This is it. I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Ciano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes. Okay. Case carry to July 26, 2021 Roosevelt Avenue Properties LLC Block 22 Lots 11, 12, and 22 Roosevelt Avenue, Ocean. All right, so tonight we're having a public discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify for the record and ask Ron Kirk, that application is being moved to the next meeting without further notice. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's a round of public discussion about the master plan. I believe we talked about this, Ron. Mr. Higgins is going to give us a description of what we're working on in the master plan. And then the board members are going to discuss or have some kind of input on that. And then at the end, we'll open it up to public discussion. Is that correct?
Correct. It's essentially going to be the same as most cases, but Jim Higgins will be the one presenting the case for a master plan and asking for everyone's input.
Okay, Jim, you have the floor.
Okay, I got it. And just for those members of the public, I'm not sitting out on my deck to be casual. I have no air conditioning. So it's a necessity. Just basically, there's a lot of confusion on the part of many people as to what a master plan is as compared to what a zoning ordinance is. And I think that's the first thing that really has to be understood. And that is, a master plan is a policy document. It's not a law. It's not an ordinance. It's simply a policy document that's developed by the planning board, not by the planning board and the council, but solely by the planning board and adopted by the planning board. Now, you have the mayor or the mayor's representative and you have a member of council on the planning board to help develop and to have the council, some of council input into the master plan. But it's basically a document that's developed as a long-term policy document to guide development in the township in the future and to provide a framework for the more detailed, more specific zoning ordinance, which is the law. The ordinance is the law. The master plan is simply a policy document that guides the development of the zoning ordinance. The let state legislature, there's two kinds of law and planning and in most other forms of law, too. There's legislative law, which is laws that are developed by the legislature or by the council of the township. And then there is case law, which is law that's refined and identified by the courts. The master plan is authorized by legislative law and the law is called the municipal land use law of the state of New Jersey. And what that says is that the planning board can develop a master plan with up to 15 different elements in it, some of which just don't apply to Ocean Township, quite frankly. But so up to 15 elements, of those elements, it has to have three. And that's goals and objectives that have to be listed. A land use element, which is quite comprehensive. It outlines the land uses, the areas of land use that are would be permitted in the various areas of the township, defining where they would be. And a housing element. Now, the township already has a housing element that's approved by the courts. And the decision was made, and I agree with that decision, that we are not going to change that housing element at all because if we do, we have to go back to the courts and that's going to be a two or three-year process to get that housing element changed. It's approved by the courts. It's legally binding. And so we're just going to incorporate that into the master plan. And the sites that are identified in that element will be identified in the land use element also. And then it's also required to have a specific policy statement indicating the consistency with the master plan with surrounding municipalities, where the township abuts those surrounding municipalities, with the county master plan and with the state development and redevelopment plan. The purpose of the master plan is to allow for the governing body to develop a zoning ordinance. Now, again, the way the law reads is that if you have a master plan, then the council can develop a zoning ordinance. And once that zoning ordinance is developed and approved by the council and adopted by the council, that ordinance has what's called a presumption of validity in the courts. In other words, if somebody attacks it for any reason, tries to change it for any reason, either through use variance or otherwise, they have the burden of proof to show the court why that ordinance should be modified. If you don't have the master plan, the burden shifts. The township then has the burden of proof to show why their zoning ordinance is valid. So it's important to have a master plan in order for the zoning ordinance to be valid. And also just to make it very clear, the governing body does have the right to disagree with the master plan. They can develop an ordinance that in some ways is inconsistent with the master plan. But they have to do that with a two-thirds majority vote of the governing body. Whereas if they develop something that's consistent with the master plan, it's simply a vote that is that's a simple majority of those present at the time. That's basically an overview of what's being done here. It's, a master plan is a broad-based policy. It's not something with the nuts and bolts and the minute aspects that you would see in a zoning ordinance, but it provides a guideline for development. It provides policies. It provides specifics in terms of where different land uses can be and gives the governing body guidance as to how they would prepare the zoning ordinance. The as far as what I would expect as a planner for Ocean Township in a master plan. First of all, the general pattern of land uses in terms of what's commercial, what's industrial, the different types of residential uses is pretty much established in the township. There might be some areas where some, there can be some adjustments, particularly on fringe areas of different zones, that type of thing. But, but the areas for this, the type of zoning, I think, are fairly well-established. Township is mostly developed. The the issues, I think, are issues. We have to decide, the planning board has to decide whether they want to just do a typical master plan or look to the future and look at what's happening around around us and around the country or in the world and so on, to see what's changing land use. For example, the internet has had a major impact on land use. It's, it's, people are relying more and more, and particularly after COVID, relying more and more on the internet to do their retail shopping. And that's going to have an impact on retail zones because you're going to have more and more retail space that's going to become vacant because of the fact that there's less of a demand for it. Same thing with office use. Office uses, many people work from home now, even more so since COVID developed. And a lot of larger companies are looking at the fact that they're getting the productivity out of their employees who are working at home that they were getting when they were working in the office and they don't have to pay the big bucks to rent large office space. So that could have an impact on, on office space, on the fact that there might be much more available office space. There might be much more available retail space. And what types of uses could fit in with the different, those different zones that might be compatible with both the trends in retail and office as well as with what exists, what has historically existed in those zones. And that might be something that the planning board would want to look at. Another issue is, and I was explaining this to the planning board before, is the availability of housing. And right now, housing is very expensive. You have actually two, really two elements of housing for the most part. You have what's the COLA housing, which is the affordable to low and moderate income people. And then you have market rate housing, which most of it is very, very expensive. And what's happening is that, and this is, this is shown by by statistics. If you look to the Monmouth County Planning Board studies, the population in the age 20 to 44 in the year 2000 in Monmouth County was 188,000. In 2018, that age group, the population was 138,000. It dropped by 50,000. And one of, one of the major reasons is that though people in that age can't afford housing, they can't come up with down payments to buy a house. There's not enough available in terms of rental housing in their, in their affordable range. So it's, it's very difficult for them to to find housing and they're, they're going out of state. And where the jobs are too, jobs are, there's more jobs available out of state also. So it's something I think should be looked at and what could be done in terms of affordability of housing to try and keep particularly that age group in the township and in the county. The state, as I talked about earlier, again to the planning board, has passed legislation requiring that the land use element include a climate change-related vulnerability assessment. And basically what that means is the fact, it's acknowledging the fact there's climate change and that there are vulnerabilities that result from that climate change. And I apologize for the bird that's competing with me. But but to look at what the vulnerabilities are and what can be done to try and deal with those vulnerabilities in the township. And I will sit down with the Office of Emergency Management Director and discuss that with him and make recommendations to the planning board. And if any members of the board or the public have any suggestions, they will be very welcome. Basically, that's the thrust of it. And I think the important thing to remember is that the master plan is not an ordinance. It's a policy document and it's to be used as a guide for development of the zoning ordinance.
Hey, hey, Ron, what's the, what's the process that we, what's the timeline and process for what we're going through on this?
This will be completed by the end of this year.
And the meetings that we have, they're all in this forum, an open session forum, and and we have multiple meetings kind of scheduled to discuss this and work it through. Is that, is that the process or?
Well, Jim will take your input and put it into a draft document. I believe that's the way Jim wants to go with this.
That's normally the procedure.
Okay. And then once that's through, we'll have only one more meeting like this for the planning board to, you know, if you've received it, to review, to update, to have a discussion. And then we will, the planning board will adopt it sometime, probably in the October timeline to give us November, December to be fully adopted. That's our timeline.
And just to correct the terminology a little bit, the planning board will look at it and approve a final draft that would then be presented to the public at a public hearing in which the public could make comments, make recommendations for changes. The board would then consider those comments and considerations and may want to do changes and may not. If they want to do changes, then we would amend the draft, have a second public hearing and then adopt the master plan at the second public hearing. But we wouldn't go on, you know, for 10 public hearings and keep making little minor changes to the master plan and drag the whole process out.
Okay.
But what I'm looking for tonight is, is input from board members. If you have it, if not, tonight, if you look at things and think about it and just send Ron an email with, with your, your input, that was, be fine too.
Jim, you mentioned that there are three, three points to the master plan. The housing element, you said we're not discussing. So I understand that.
Yeah.
What about the land use that we would discuss? Why don't, can you talk about like some of the things that are what you're concerned about or what you need input on?
Yeah. Yeah. My concern, well, first of all, the, the land uses in terms of where they are are pretty much established. You've got, you've got the Route 35 corridor, which is primarily retail, commercial. One thing would be the discussion of the types of uses that might be permitted in those areas, whether we want to break them down into smaller office areas for offices or whether we want to have areas for retail and office both, which most of our commercial zones are that way. Whether we want to allow hybrid-type uses in those zones such as not, not a huge facility like the Amazon facility that's going in at Seaview Square, but smaller facilities that might combine in-house, you know, onsite retail sales also with delivery of, of retail goods to, to the, to the end user, that type of thing. And offices, again, we might want to look at in terms of offices, whether or not we want to permit home professional offices because it's happening all over again. And, you know, things that might be considered there would be maybe suggesting to council that there be incentives for, for things like allowing, and this is sort of going off on a little bit of a tangent, but allowing more floor area for a residential use to permit a home office use, but also tie that in with having solar panels on the roof to try, try and provide more, more cleaner energy, that type of thing. So giving, giving incentives to do things that are more environmentally sound. And yet at the same, same time recognizing that there are issues with, with people working at home now. Many, many people working at home.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for Jim or any input? Dave?
No, but one of the things that I did want to mention, and I know you mentioned before, that we did receive over 300 responses back from the students of Ocean Township School System, which have been forwarded on to Ron. So it's kind of neat that the kids actually took a solid interest in this particular subject because it is the future, the future of their township. They have a voice and then I think a lot of them wanted to exercise that. So I thought that was kind of a a really good thing. And I know Ron's got that information and he'll pass that on. But, you know, it's curious to see what's important to them, you know, things like traffic and riding their bikes around and green infrastructure and, and, you know. So that was a real positive that came out of the, the last couple of council meetings. And that's all I've got. You know, just want to keep listening, but I've got a few ideas myself, but we'll pass them on.
So Ron, is that, is that what you want? You want us to kind of write up our, our thoughts and send them to you?
In any way, yeah. Jeff, in any way, shape, or form, sometimes you're driving down the road and you, you know, have a thought and you know, we should address this or we should address that. Any and all suggestions and comments are welcome.
Okay. And then in our next meeting, you're going to kind of present all the thoughts and suggestions?
I don't think it'll be our next meeting. I think it'll be a few meetings from now. We need to give Jim some time to take in the suggestions and digest, you know, what everyone wants and put it into that form.
Okay.
Jim?
A lot more specific information. One thing you might want to look at, you know, from your own experience, driving around the township areas where you feel there might be intersection improvements might be advisable. I will be sitting down with the traffic safety officer and getting his input, but also just the input from everybody that rides around town. Just, just, you know, you, you know, as well as anybody, you know, where their problem areas are and what intersections need to be looked at and possibly redesigned in one way or another.
And those things, those things that have been zoned in one capacity, we're not really having the ability to rezone those things if that time should become available. Like, for example, if there was a strip mall that really wasn't, that's, that's always been struggling. You know, is there, is there some method to repurpose that or what is that?
That's, that's what I was talking about, trying to come up with innovative types of uses that would fit into these retail and commercial and office areas that, that may provide some impetus for places like that to to be redeveloped. I hate to use the word redeveloped, has a whole different
Yeah. Yeah.
Meaning in many cases, but basically if you take a site and you change the use and knock the buildings down, you're redeveloping it, even if you don't have a redevelopment plan. But, but you know, basically that, you know, any thoughts you have in terms of innovative uses, given, given the fact that the whole retail and office and industrial climate is changing. And the internet has, has had a major impact on all of that. I like to joke around when I, when I go to a meeting at night and testify in another town. I have my briefcase with me with my, my laptop and I tell them, here's my office. Because basically that's where it is.
I have a question about the tree ordinance. Is that something that would be something that we would discuss in the master plan?
Not normally. Again, it's the tree. Now, I don't, I know the council is developing another, another tree ordinance. I don't think that's part of the zoning. So, and the master plan might want to talk about in the conservation element, you might want to have a policy statement that, you know, it's, you know, land development should be geared towards trying to maintain the natural features, including vegetation as much as possible, that type of thing. But to get really specific in terms of this number, this many trees on each site should be preserved, that type of thing. I, I don't think that's something that's appropriate in the master plan. I think, again, you can have a policy, but, but getting into the, the nuts and bolts specifics, I don't think is appropriate.
Right. And this, this is the only session that we're having the community speak?
No, no, the community be able to speak at, at every session.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks. So is that what we're, is that the next thing for us to do is to listen to the community speak?
Right now, it's up to the board.
Yeah.
Do any members of the board have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more quick comment. So, you know, one of the things that's interesting are some of these strip malls that have sort of, you know, time has sort of passed them by. And, and Jim makes some really good points about repurposing them and doing something different and new with them. In particular, what was done at the Sears site was actually phenomenal because now we repurposed the building that was kind of, you know, not being used. And now we have a second home and a second life for it. But for instance, there's some other places. But a lot of the developers want to do this sort of mixed-use type of thing where we're adding apartments, condos, and then retail. But that does change the makeup of the township. Now you're adding more people, more cars, more traffic, even though it may be a wonderful use, but it also affects the affordable housing coefficient number. So now you've got to sort of weigh these things out. So it's a good question and it's a good point because yes, a lot of these places do need a redo or redevelopment or a rezone or whatever you want to call it. But unfortunately, it could be, you know, it, it comes at a price is what I'm getting at. The township has settled our affordable housing obligation. We have, I believe it's about four years left on the five-year moratorium. So right now, we do not have to build any more affordable housing as far as I know. But, you know, as we know, four years will go by pretty quick and then we're back faced with the same exact question. And then there's that, what's the new obligation thing? So these are all things that I think the planning board does need to think about.
Yeah, and I agree with that. And, and the one thing to, to think about is the fact that when you come up with a plan for development, economics isn't supposed to figure into it. But the reality is, if you designate something that's not economically feasible, it's not going to happen. So you've got to, got to look at the feasibility of, of the things you're recommending as well as the, the functional, the, the impact on, on the community, the impact on surrounding properties. You have to look at all those things.
And, and in that, in that, in that journey that we go through with that, are you the, are you Jim, the person who's given us the guidance or do we have the availability of other people who may have had to look at the transformation of a community and help us weigh some of those things that they were considering? Like, how do we get some third-party, third-party perspective?
It depends upon the third party. Depending on if you're talking about professionals, then you're talking about paying them to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Because they're not going to, they're not going to do it out of the goodness of their heart. Especially in this climate right now, every professional.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the spectrum of people that we would go into, which, you know, I don't know if it's other planning boards that have gone through the same metamorphosis and, or, you know, other experts that have kind of gone through that.
Yeah, Jeff, it, it, it goes to the planner in just about every other community. They don't bring in more chefs to the kitchen, so to speak.
Ron, I'd like to go back to the procedure that you were mentioning in terms of public input. So it's been made clear that Jim is not going to bring this up at the next meeting because he needs time to think about the suggestions and like, correct?
Correct.
So, so at the July meeting, there's not going to be a discussion of the master plan, correct?
Correct.
And therefore there wouldn't be any input by the public on the master plan because it's not being brought up, correct?
Correct.
So only when the next round takes place, so to speak, when Jim presents clear documentation verbally, that's when there will be questions from the board members and the public will have an opportunity. Is that fair to say?
That's fair.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for.
And, and, and so on the public comment this time, is the public comment talking about things that they like to see in it or are they talking about questions about the process?
At this point in time, they could do both.
Yeah. That, that's my feeling is they could do both.
Okay.
Any other board member questions, comments? Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments or, or questions by board members, then we can go to the public.
Before you do that, Cindy, I just wanted to make a comment.
Before you do that, Sandy, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I support, um, I'm a contractor supporting Aberdeen, Maryland. Just this week they're starting to open up totally. I have friends that work off of two eighty seven in corporate offices and now have a schedule of when people are to report back to the office. Maybe thanks for opening up a little bit. Just FYI.
Yeah. And just, just so you know, Estelle, there are, there are some companies that are planning to go back to, to where the way they were pre-COVID. There are other very large companies that are actually establishing task forces to develop a, a future plan where their employees work from home for the most part and they cut back on their office space. So it's, it's not going to be, it's not going to be like a mass exodus from office space, but there is going to be, there's going to be some impact on the available office space. Probably going to be somewhat of a glut for a little while.
Jim, are you aware of the intersection of Bound Road, Asbury Avenue, uh, Wayside Road and, uh, Route sixty six?
I am aware and I'm aware that the state is doing something there, but I don't know if they have shared that with anybody.
So is that something that's under the state or is that something that we would put in our master plan?
Well, that's, the state has control as to what's there. Um, we, I think the only thing we could put in the master plan is that it's an intersection that needs improvement. It's being improved, being redesigned by the state, whether it's being improved or not, I don't know. But, but it's being redesigned by the state, rebuilt by the state. And to my knowledge, I, I believe the township engineer has been trying to figure out what's going on there. And I don't know if they've been able to figure it out either.
So my understanding is they're actually want to put a traffic circle in there, like the old famous traffic circle of New Jersey. They're going to put another traffic circle in there. So that's the scuttlebutt.
Yeah, that, that intersection is horrible.
Yeah, it is.
It, it's a disaster. It's antiquated, especially with all the additional traffic flow that we have now. Um, it definitely needs to be updated.
Well, they're, they're in the process of doing it now. They just haven't shared the plan with anybody that I know. Even you've seen them doing the work on sixty six and the median and sixty six. And I think that's all tied into that improvement.
I thought they were taking the brick out of the, the ground on Main Street and Asbury and depositing it there.
You might be.
Uh, anyone else from the board? How many questions for Jim? All right. I think we'll, uh, open it up to the public. Uh, how do we, do we do, uh, they have to state their name and their dress, correct, Sandy?
Yes.
All right. So, um, I, I guess the best thing is to do is, uh, one of the time, let's, let's see if we can recognize each person and, um, start questions. Would like to go first? Raise your hand.
It'll be questions or comments, right?
Question and comments. That's correct. Raise your hand with a video and then I can, uh, call on you. No questions or comments? Jackie?
Mrs. Wenzel, you're, you're on mute. There you go.
Hi. Um, okay. I guess I just want, I could start with commenting or asking some questions to Jim Higgins based on his opening up tonight's meeting. You said, Mr. Higgins, that the master plan really isn't the law. It's kind of a guideline, correct?
I said, it's a policy document.
Policy.
It's a legal document. It's a policy document. It's not a law.
But one of the advantages of spending all this time to create one is to look at what's going on in town, not under the pressure of having to make a decision because of any specific development, but more to really weigh out the best use of land and the best flow and also where perhaps there's a lot of bottlenecks with traffic now, how perhaps things could be, you know, adjusted differently. So it's done at a time when you're not under pressure to make any decisions, just really to properly plan out the town. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I understand the, what the question, I, I have, I have some problems with the phraseology. It's done at a, at a time. There's always time when there's pressure to make decisions. There's always going to be a time when you're doing a master plan that a development application is going to come before your boards, either the zoning board or the planning board, and it's going to have to proceed according to law. And while the planning board is trying to make decisions on that property, on the master plan, there's also pressure for the development of that property and for approval of that development. And the state law says it has to be done within a certain period of time. So you can't put off those decisions in order to develop a master plan that might be contrary to those decisions. The other problem there is that once an application is filed, the law that's in effect, the ordinance that's in effect at the time it's filed is the one that governs. So it doesn't matter if the master plan, if somebody were to come on, come in and say, take one of the auto dealerships in the township and want to expand it and the master plan were to say, we don't want any more auto dealerships. It wouldn't matter because what, that application would have been filed before the master plan is adopted. And more importantly, before a new zoning ordinance was adopted, implementing the master plan. So there's always pressure.
Okay.
When you're doing a master plan, you want to, you want to try and look at things and, and generally you want to, you, you don't want to block out what's going around, on around you, but you want to come up with the best possible solution for the properties.
No, I, I, I can understand if you're saying both are happening simultaneously, um, faster plans being re, reestablished now. But we had, we've had a master plan that's been, um, supposedly guiding the development. I mean, we, we, just to, just to, you know, speak about current events, we, we, we referred to the master plan constantly with the safe thirty two acres, um, meetings. Because that master plan was in place for some time and, um, the particular development that we, we were all, you know, discussing with the thirty two acres. Um, that application came way after that master plan was settled, many years after. So, so we were, you know, um, we made changes and zoning changes and all types of changes for that particular development. Uh, and I understand the master plan is not to be law, but it's to guide, uh, so we don't just randomly make decisions. So I think that was a lot of, you know, what I know I brought up quite a bit because it seemed that we were just going against what was at a time when people weren't under pressure to, to make a decision. We were going against what was the best use of that property.
Hey, can we, okay, we, for one second, Sandy, I need you to interject. We.
Yes. All right. Um, so, um, Jackie, of course, um, most people on the call are aware that, uh, your husband, uh, presently has a, uh, application on appeal, uh, from the decision of the planning board and you and your husband had, uh, filed a, uh, a, uh, action in the superior court, uh, specifically dealing with master plan and ordinance change issues. And so we, no, if I could just finish.
Okay.
So, um, you know, we can't talk about pending litigation and anything that's said tonight is not intended or, or can or should be used in the, uh, litigation here. What, we're only supposed to focus in on the future. So we don't want to tie in uh, the history of the thirty two acre, um, uh, litigation or the application itself. It's just perspective. As Mr. Higgins said clearly, um, we're talking about the future, not the past.
No, I understand that. I totally understand it. I was talking in general. I was talking in general of its guidance, but not being law. And then the zoning, when, when things are zoned, when there are zoning ordinances, that is more the law, correct? Did I understand you correctly, Mr. Higgins?
That's correct.
Okay. But then that law, again, in this case was changed, zoning was changed.
The zoning was changed, but the zoning was changed consistent with the master plan. The planning board made that decision. And as I understand it, that was appealed and the courts upheld that decision. So.
No, we never.
That's correct. And again.
That case was never actually heard. That case was never heard. So.
Okay. No, 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 no.
No, wait a second.
Everyone.
But let's not. Not going to talk about the history of the first case or the pending case. That's what you're, uh, getting into. If you have.
What I'm trying to do is establish.
Wait a second now. Wait, I'm not going to let you, you know, cut in on what I'm trying to say, please.
But you can cut in on me.
And the chairman will guide us through this, but we, we, you should direct comments, questions about, uh,
So I, I.
The master plan.
I would just like to say, uh, I miss Wenzel. I, you know, no, 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 uh, you know, disrespect at all. I just think that, I guess what we're trying to do is just ask questions or make suggestions to Jim about the future master plan, not to discuss the past. Let's talk about the future. Let's work together and work on how we can help the town. Do you have any suggestions in that regards?
Sure. So another thing that Mr. Higgins was stating about the change in, um, in retail shopping and how we're looking forward at the master plan, um, you know, will there be as many, uh, areas needed for, for shopping? And, and of course we all see the abandoned strip malls up and down the highway. So perhaps since certain, uh, you know, trees may have been removed, but certain, uh, buildings have not gone up yet. Has there been any discussion with the current developer to perhaps have different land use for that property?
Are we talking about? You know, again, you're doing the same thing. You're talking about the case that you have before the superior court. We cannot talk about that.
Well, maybe someone else at, in, in the community asked those questions.
Are you going to, are you going to let me speak, please?
Uh, well, you keep interrupting me, but go ahead.
No, I, I, I think I was in the middle of talking and you started to interrupt.
Sorry.
And, and the chairman, the chairman, you guide us now. Now who is, who's supposed to speak now?
I, again, I, I, you know, I, 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 I would have to say, um, you know, in all respect, really, I, I want to give you an opportunity to speak, Jackie. I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off. If anything, I'm laying back, but you got to stop talking about the thirty two acres. We need to talk about the future.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So now we're looking at a new master plan.
Correct.
And there'll be zoning, new zoning that will be applicable to what's in the master plan, correct? Like I would imagine the master plan is going to say this particular area should be preserved as open space because there's much too much density. I know, uh, Dave Fisher is working on traffic. Uh, I, I've, I've been doing a lot of, um, research myself in terms of accident reports in town and, uh, recently discovered really that, you know, West Park is a disaster and worse than Deal Road. So, um, you know, all of the jug handle turns, perhaps we don't have so many jug handle turns, you know, like all of these things that as we're doing the new master plan and say, Dave Fisher is working on traffic. Will your traffic research, Mr. Fisher, be weighed in on the master plan development? Are you planning to in, interject any of that?
Now, I was talking to Mayor today.
To David.
Dave, you have any, uh, input?
Yeah. I mean, um, we're, we're working in conjunction with the police department. We, we have the state, you know, we have the statistics. These are all the same things that we're going to Jim Higgins with. They're, they're on a constant, you know, evolution. We're always concerned about traffic, traffic safety, traffic flow, how to get people from north to south, east to west, egresses. So these are all the things that we're, we're talking about. This is, it's every corner, every specific thing, how to get the kids to be able to ride their bikes to, to the schools, how they can get to the beach. How do we combine our forces with the different townships in the area so that we work in conjunction with West Long Branch and Long Branch and Asbury Parks. We're all part of some sort of green infrastructure. These are all things that were, that are on the table and that we are going to discuss.
But in terms of the master plan, say where the, um, defunct, uh, say some of the shopping centers that have not, um, they're not performing now and they're abandoned. Will they, instead of being repurposed, perhaps brought back to being more open space? Uh, is that a consideration that might be in the master plan?
I don't know.
Just sort of like, we have such a bad density problem right now, and I don't know how else we can move people through town. I know people are going too fast. I, and I'd like to talk to you about that, you know, on another time, Dave, in terms of, since you're doing the study. Because, um, you know, everybody speeds through Ocean Township to slow way down at Interlake and, 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 uh, Allenhurst. And we've become like a speed through town and it's not necessary for, for, uh, West Park or Deal to be forty miles an hour because at least Deal Road is a town road. We can slow it to thirty, even thirty five. I mean, especially again with the, with, um, the loss of habitat and more deer roaming, you know, living amongst us. I think people should be made aware. A lot of people are coming in from out of town to go to the beach areas that it's really, you know, we should have a sign like they have in, in, in Interlake and that says, you know, whoa, slow down. We should remind people because it's not a highway, these roads that head to these other ten, you know, that head closer to the beach. West Park, Deal Road, they're not highways. They're part of our residential neighborhoods and, and the, the, the origin, the master plan that I've been most familiar with east of thirty five was always strictly residential. So I would think as a residential neighborhood and having a park in, in the master plan or at least in the zoning, we should really seriously consider slowing down the speed limits to, that were not a speed through town, just to slow down at the proper towns. We're a proper town. And I think once people get off thirty five, they should slow it down.
Okay. Well, Jim, Jim Higgins will be having conversations with the police department, the traffic safety officer, the, um, office of, um, emergency management. So that'll be part of the master plan will be the input from the police department.
Yeah. And just so it's clear, the master, master plan will identify those areas that need to be studied with recommendations, but will not make specific recommendations as to speeds, as to intersection improvements, other than to identify sections of road where, that need to be looked at so that those types of things can be, I can be determined by the appropriate professionals. I'm not a traffic engineer and I don't know any planner who is. And, uh, so, you know, to, to design things or to determine specific speeds is well beyond the scope of the master plan, but the master plan would identify those sections of roadway and those intersections that do need to be studied and need to be improved.
Okay. So I guess in terms of the environmental commission and shade tree commission, will they have a time to work with you, uh, Jim, to, to say, perhaps with some of these abandoned, um, commercial properties of ways to, to, to create less density in our township. So we start to have a little bit more of, um, the sort of old town feel that, you know, it had without, you know, we, I think most people, most complaints that I get when people talk to me as just like neighbor to neighbor is that there's just too much density now. And, and one of the things that Mayor Cicliano said very well in his video inviting everyone to attend this evening was that, you know, the proper size of houses next to their neighbors, like having a proper master plan with, with zoning that is respected, not changed per request, but respected. That we wouldn't have situations like we have on Whale Pond with that very large commercial looking home next to little Cape Homes on the same block. Um, I know at the time I was told it never went through the planning board. It went through zoning and adjustments. And maybe could you take a minute to explain to everybody that's on here tonight? What is the difference? Like, how could it not have gone to the planning board? That's something that large and also not just large. And I understand it had the right amount of, um, lotage, pot lots, three lots. He was allowed to build that large. But I would think a setback, a proper setback, like they have green, they have a yard. But that home is so large and invasive, like so right up on the sidewalk that I think, um, the planning board should have been involved. I think that I, I'm surprised it didn't go through the planning board.
Okay. Then, then you would have to talk. Sorry, my secretary is getting upset here. You would have to talk to the state legislature on that regard because the state legislature directs where that type of application goes. If it's a single family, let, let, let me finish, please. It's a single family residence.
Right.
Because it's a single family residence, it doesn't require site plan. If it doesn't require site plan or subdivision, it does not go to the planning board. It goes to the zoning board. So it was a single family residence that did not require site plan or subdivision. So therefore it was. So therefore it would go to the zoning board because it had bulk variances associated with it. And the bulk variances were lot coverage because most of the lot was in a flood plain and the lot was really not usable unless they got some variances. And I don't disagree with you that the house is very large, it's too large, it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. But there's, you know, the board made a decision to approve it and there was, there was very good testimony going, again, going when I talked at the beginning about the differences between legislative law and case law. There are tons of, there's tons of case law that governs that type of development. And the testimony that went in was consistent with that case law. If the board had denied it, it would have gone to court and almost certainly would have been reversed by the courts.
But isn't, couldn't we have a standard of setback for a home that things are not?
We do.
We do, Jackie.
You could have a standard and something we may want to recommend is that the setbacks would be increased based on the size of the home. That's, that's something that could be done.
Okay, and that would fall under the master plan or that zoning?
Well, the master plan could make that recommendation, but without getting into specifics about, you know, how many feet for how many bigger home. You say that, you know, where, where homes are bigger, it would make more sense to have, to have a, a varying scale of setbacks based on the size of the home and the size of the lot, that type of thing.
Absolutely. I would think for the homeowner as well, it'd be, you know, having a nice grand entrance would be beautiful. Okay, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to take, I'm sure there are a lot of people want to speak here tonight. But I just, I, it was just a good point that the mayor had brought up in his, his video. He had specifically said about size of homes. So I just wanted to know who exact, how exactly is that governed? Is it zoning board, board of adjustments, planning board?
It's, it's board of adjustment, in terms of variances. If you have a single family home that has any variances associated with it, it goes to the board of adjustment, which most of the applications before the board of adjustment are those types of applications. And if you can't require a, or a single family home or a two family home. And that's the state law. There's that. One other thing, just, just to clarify something, and I, I know you keep talking about density and traffic. The problem on West Park and the problem on Deal Road is directly associated with Route 18. And dumping all the traffic into the township from Route 18, collecting the traffic from, from not just the township, but from surrounding municipalities to go onto Route 18. So it's not the density of development in the township as much as it is the, the impact that Route 18 and all of the traffic that that generates and sucks in basically from, from surrounding municipalities that causes the problems on Deal Road and Whale Pond.
So perhaps, and, and I've promised now, this is the last thing I'm going to say. Perhaps if we slowed the main arteries that come out of 18 and, and, and people go, oh, I don't want to go through there. You have to go through Ocean Township. It feels like going through Interlake and we have to go too slow. For example, if people want to go to Long Branch or go to the beach, they go right down 36. That's a highway. You know, maybe, maybe we, we just really slow it down. It will, it will discourage people from taking that.
I don't remember the jurisdiction of West Park and Deal Road, whether it's county or whether it's municipal. If it's county, the town can't do anything about it.
No, Deal Road is our, is township. So, anyway.
That's something that could be done.
All right, let's let someone else talk. Patty?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thanks for the opportunity and for having this hearing. I really appreciate it. I live at 486 Daffels Street. And I, first of all, I'm just going to talk about the future because, you know, this is a guide for the future, as Mr. Higgins has said. And I think that, you know, as such, I'm really heartened to, you know, hear climate mentioned. I know the new New Jersey climate, municipal climate resiliency law requires us as a township to look at that. And that's, you know, that's no small task. So, you know, really, I want to also offer, you know, if there's any assistance needed or you need contacts or people who can assist with that, please let me know. I work for the New Jersey League of Conservation Voters, so that's my day, that's my day gig. So, you know, I, I know a lot of folks at BPU and JDPA and Rutgers and a lot of the great places. So just wanted to put that out of your, if you have any questions or want some, you know, input, I can see if I can find people who can give it, who are smarter than me. And I also just think that that task is really important in terms of building up good stormwater infrastructure for the long haul, because this is the single biggest threat the township, every township in the state, you know, is facing. So really strong green, green infrastructure as a guide to really promote that at a residential as well as a commercial facility. And Mr. Higgins knows, you know, I'm doing some renovations. And one of the big pieces of mine is that I'm putting in a rain garden. I'm trying to try to capture all the water on my property. So I think that's something that we want to really encourage and incentivize people to do as well as building electrification and trying to really, you know, have less use of fossil fuels because that's the energy master plan for the state. And in that way of thinking, we also have to think in terms of long-term as a township, what are we going to be doing with our elect, make sure that we have adequate electricity infrastructure for homes? And what are we going to need for that? And, and, you know, what's, and I, and I'm certainly not an expert in that, but the people who, who are tell me that this is a real issue for a lot of towns. So, because we know that building demand for the average home is going to, electricity demand for the average home is going to double by 2050. Because everything's going to be electrified, buildings, transportation, everything. So that's something we have to long-term think. So that, that's sort of the, the future piece. There's like this, this near-term piece. One of the things I'll talk about is trees. Obviously, I think the policy guy I know is not in ordinance, but I think it's, it definitely needs to address the importance of trees in the township and protecting trees. We all know each tree is, you know, average tree is a thousand gallons, you know, of, of rainfall a year. Then we also know that they're huge carbon sequestration sources. But also temperatures are rising and trees are important for shade and preventing heat island effects. I work a lot in environmental justice communities around the state. And one of the top priorities for these poorer neighborhoods and communities is that they don't have enough green infrastructure. Once you cut it, get, cut these down, they're gone and it takes a long time to bring them back. So we really want to be protective of our trees so that, you know, it feels like that Joni Mitchell song, take, you know, you don't know what you got till it's gone. It's like that with our trees. We want to, I, I hope our poly, energy master, our, energy master, our master plan really has guidance for strong tree protection. And the last thing I want to say is that I really would love to see our old charming historic communities protected. And I'd like to see a nod to that. So I would really love, and I know a lot of my neighbors would love here in West Allenhurst, to see a recommendation in the master plan that our historic communities in West Allenhurst, in Moana Masa around the lake, that we explore how to preserve these communities and create local historic districts. So I, I know this won't do it. I know this isn't the law, but I'd love to have the language in there that we can create that because they are really at risk of being torn down. They're very different, you know, they're, they're so, such small lots and people want more space, so they tear them down and build very high things. And it's just, these communities are going to be destroyed. And there really are specials. Why I moved here, I told my husband, you know, that's why we love it, why my neighbors love it. So that's my, my last piece. I just hope we can put that in the master plan and, and protect these really unique communities and, and historic districts, historic areas. And thank you, Dan. Thank you so much.
Jim, can you, can you in, put some input into what Jack, to Patty said?
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with her. I think what we can do in a land use element, and as she was talking, I was thinking about it. In the prior master plan, we had a whole section that was community characteristics, which I think was a little bit of overkill. But I think in the land use element, we can probably define some areas of the township that need to be looked at in terms of their historic character. And, you know, come up with, with more better standards of development and maybe a plan to try and maintain that historic character.
And could it, could it be suggested perhaps a historic, the creation of a historic commission? I know, you know, Ocean Grab has, grows a historic commission. The details of what it means is all going to, you know, that can be all worked out in a lot of public comments and stuff. But just to create the process perhaps that, that there is a structure in government that can address these things. That's just one possibility.
Dennis?
Yes, sir. Am I still on mute? Oh, I succeeded.
We hear you.
That's unfortunate for you. I have a question for Mr. Higgins and I, I just really need, would like some clarification. You're saying that the master plan is not the area for specific resolutions, specific guidelines. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? Because, because a little bit, a few minutes ago, you, you mentioned you were giving an example about perhaps the master plan might say, we don't want any more car dealerships on Route 35.
Yeah.
That, that sounds like a specific thing to me.
Well, when I'm talking about specifics is I'm talking about the, that, the setback of a building be 25 feet in a certain area or 50 feet, the lot coverage should be 25% of the lot area, that, that type of thing, which are really zoning standards.
Okay.
I think really, you know, it was probably a poor example. I was just trying to off the cuff, come up with an example of, you know, what a master plan might say.
Right.
And generally, master plans wouldn't go into that kind of detail, even for the uses. But, you know, we'd, we'd talk about maybe in this area, we might want to reexamine the types of uses that are permitted and maybe prohibit some of them that exist because we don't think they fit and look at others that, that might fit better into the area, that type of thing, without getting into specific land use. Maybe in some cases, we would get into specific land uses.
But, but an example of not wanting any more car dealerships, that's, that's appropriate?
That was just, that was just off the cuff.
Okay, I understand that, but is, is that not a good, a good thing for a master plan?
I, I don't, unless for some reason there is an overwhelming concern about something like that, I'd say it's not appropriate.
Okay. Would it be an appropriate spot for saying goals that you wanted to achieve, say, over the next four or five years that you wanted to have X amount of solar energy generated in the town or something like that?
That could be, yeah. You, you could do that. I, I would rather word it that we would want to substantially increase the amount of solar energy. And have policies that would, would encourage the use of solar energy.
Okay, similar to that maybe.
There's, there's wind energy, you know, people are very opposed to windmills.
Right.
Quite frankly, if they're done right, they could be beautiful. But, you know, some, they're just not always done right.
They're good hot dogs, too.
Yeah, that's true.
But, I mean, if you were going to be talking about water quality in the town and our three mainstreams, that would be an appropriate thing?
Yeah, that would be an appropriate thing to talk about that, too, yes.
Okay, and funding for that? Would that be appropriate or not?
I know, I know what you mean by.
Well, if you're going to do water quality in the town, you're going to have to take samples for water quality that costs money.
Would cost, but that would have to come from council.
From council, so that wouldn't come, that would be beneficial in my master plan?
Okay, the master plan might recommend these things be done, but it can't recommend where the money would come from.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Jim, I have a few more questions. The Orchard Plaza retail area, which has always been a, a problem in our town. What, what is, what is the permitted uses for that?
That's in the highway commercial, I believe, the C2. So there's a whole gamut of retail and office uses that are permitted there.
So there's not, it's not limited?
No, it's not limited at all. It's probably one of the, the least limited commercial zones, if not the least limited commercial zone in the township.
And then another question. What, i- is there any, can the master plan develop some type of retention basin for floodwaters? Somewhere like maybe Joe Playa Park or something like that? Can we build the lake or something?
We can look at it and recommend that it be explored. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go as far without doing the, the engineering, saying it should be done.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be a great thing for the town.
Yeah.
To have that runoff and retain there into a beautiful lake in Joe Playa Park, which is, there's
Yeah.
Without having to remove any trees or anything.
Yeah.
Idea.
You would have to do, well, the topography, the general topography is probably available from the state to see whether, you know, that would be feasible or not, but it's.
So we would, at the master plan, you could put that in the master plan? Is that how it goes and so that it's a?
Yeah, this, as far as the.
It's like a recommendation.
Utility service plan or in the open space and conservation plan? That could be put in.
Jim, just as an aside, didn't the township consider that in the past?
I don't believe, I think, I think the Corps of Engineers may have looked at that in the past.
I thought so.
And for some reason discounted it. That's why I said, I wouldn't recommend it. I would recommend that it be looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the public? Ms. Wenzel, do you have any more comments?
No, I, I think some of the, what Patty said about the historic preservation of some of our homes, I, I think that's would be a wonderful thing. I think there's been a lot of favorite homes I've had in town when I moved here that sadly have been torn down and like, you know, some people buy two or three lots and then put one big house. So I think if, I think that would be an amazing thing. We should add to the, either the master plan or whatever process has to be done to establish historic preservation. So.
Anyone else from the public have any comments or questions for Mr. Higgins? Anybody from the board?
This is Sandy. I'll, I'll just make one general comment about historic buildings, houses, which are a good topic. The MLUL has a specific statute. We can look at Ocean Grove, for example. Lock Arbor and Allenhurst have their entire municipalities under historic preservation ordinances. It does involve an extensive study and at least in my experience dealing with two of those three municipalities, there has to be, you know, commonality of design and the like. So it certainly couldn't be recommended, but.
Recommended to be looked at. It's a very difficult process. There's no question about that.
That's what I'm driving in.
Yeah.
But what, what about maybe just the certain age of the home? Like, you know, maybe it's hard to do a whole neighborhood, but, I mean, around the lake, as Patty said, there are all those charming little lake houses. I mean, that, that's really, scale-wise, they're, they're the right, they're the right scale for.
There are, there are architects that specialize in that, that would have to be brought in. I think there's federal law that, that pretty much controls what kind of standards you can have and what type of situation. And, and I really don't know specifically what that is. It's my understanding that you would have to have a large, a substantially large area with a lot of, like Sandy said, commonality within that area to designate it. And I'm not so sure you can designate individual sites. And I could be wrong. I don't, I just don't know.
But Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, this can't be part of the master plan. It can be.
I mean, you can make a recommendation to, to study the area.
Right.
It's well beyond the, the scope of the master plan itself to actually do the study.
But what about certain homes that you know are of a certain age, you know, that they're over 100 years old? I mean, could there be maybe, maybe a movement that they're designated as historic property? They get a plaque in front. People know that is an historic property. They know if they purchase it, they, they pretty much are going to live with the, the beauty within.
Do that, but you can't, you can't legally require them not to change it.
Yeah, there, there is a statutory scheme whereby there can be a historic designation, the different levels of that. That also can be recommended for study.
Yeah.
Many times it keys in on uniqueness of a particular structure and not necessarily just the age. Something that can be looked at. There are experts who are, as Jim said, historic architects who specialize in that. They could be asked certain questions.
Yeah, back to what Joe was saying before about the water basin in Playa Park. I think that's a terrific idea. And I know it could just kind of be suggested as Jim is saying, but I think that that would be wonderful in Playa Park.
I do, too. I love the idea of a lake.
Hey, Joe, I got one last comment.
Uh huh.
So as a part of the reexamination committee, I'll speak for the committee. We asked the public to continue to fill out these surveys. You need to go onto the township website, www.oceantownship.org, oceantp.org. Fill out your, your survey, send it back to Ron Kirk. This is the time where the public has the chance to prioritize what's important and what they want to incorporate into the master plan. Ron will then transfer that information. Ron will then transfer that information to Jim, and then we at least have your input. So this is the time, it's critical. It's hard to get the information out. I've been, you know, we try all kinds of vehicles, but this is one of those vehicles. So I encourage everybody to get involved, because now's your chance, okay?
Yeah, excuse me, but I think we have to let the public know. It doesn't, it's hard to do it online. You have to print it.
We have tried every possible way. This is how we are, this is what we're doing, and this is what we've settled on. We have gone through this extensively. You may not love the process, but this is the process. I ask everybody to just fill out the survey and get it back to Ron Kirk.
No, I'm not saying there's anything, it's just technology-wise. I tried to put in a number, you know, online to do it.
Hold on one second, Jackie.
They all turn one.
Hold on one second. Ron, are there surveys at the town hall that people could come in and fill out?
You could come to my office and I'll fill it out. I'm trying to save trees by not printing so much of paper, so we're trying to use it as an email.
How about if somebody brings you a piece of paper with their handwritten information on it? Or emails you?
It'll go in the same exact survey box, it'll be all assessed.
Right, so there are other ways to do it, Jackie. I can't, if someone wants, has input, they can write or walk into Ron's office and say, hey, these are my concerns.
No, I understand, I'm just saying if there's a way to correct it, technology-wise.
We're not, no, Jackie, we're not changing it now. We're not changing the way we're doing it.
Are we aware of the problem, Ron, or is anybody aware of the problem?
There is no problem. We have...
Okay, you, well, no, because you...
Jackie, here's a deal. We are a planning board, okay? We are a governing body, okay? And this is the way we're moving it forward. We're not going, I'm telling you...
I'm just alerting you of a problem that's not working, you're not listening to me. And I've tried to fill it out online. And it will ask you, what are the areas that are important to you, stating number one to number ten? When you try and put in the different options from one to ten, whatever number I put in, all of the categories become that number.
Okay, Jackie, you could...
It's very difficult to fill out.
Okay, and three hundred high school students were able to do that. So we're going to continue on in the way that we're doing it.
So did they print it?
We can, so we, look, hold it. This is the way we're doing it, this is the way we're moving forward. We're not going to change our process in July.
No, so just tell people they have to print it, handwrite it, and hand it in, because it's not working online. Maybe that's how the high school students did it, I don't know.
We've tried it in all different ways. If someone sends me an email and says, these are the three things that I care about, it'll still go into our survey.
Okay, that makes sense.
Jim, I have a question. Can you put down, can you put some type of list together of all the thoughts or concerns that we, as a body of Ocean Township, you're considering? Is that possible? We can get some kind of list together?
I can try. I can't guarantee what it's going to look like, but...
Is your handwriting that poor? I mean...
No, I mean, I can type it out. It's just a matter of bannering a lot of things around, but we can get something done.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I would think that would be some type of clear idea as to whether or not... So we're not getting redundant thoughts out there over and over, especially since you're already considering certain things.
Yeah, okay, that's... I just, I think one thing that hasn't been brought out tonight, and I know there's not a lot of the public here tonight listening, but the public has to understand is that the way the municipal land use law is structured, the only public input that's required by the law is at a public hearing when the draft master plan is presented to the public. What's being done here is, I've never seen it in forty years, and I've done master plans in a number of communities, that the public outreach is exceptional. And it goes well, well beyond what the law requires.
And that's on me to try to bring everyone in the town into this master plan. I'm trying as hard as one person can, but no one else would put a master plan like this.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
We're trying.
It shows. Okay, so I believe we've come to our conclusion.
Yes.
I'll call the township Ocean Planning Board. I would like to close. Do I get a motion?
Yes, let's have a motion in a second.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes. John, are you...
Yes.
Yes, can I have a second, please?
A second, that's Pete.
Pete's second. Amy, could you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Felia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman de Benedetto?
Yes. Good night, thank you for all your comments.
Thank you, have a great one.
Very informative.